Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to the city council meeting. If I could ask everyone to please stand, council members and citizens, for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker? Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Members of council, we have for consideration the minutes of a called meeting on July the 13th, 2021, and of a regular meeting on July 13th, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion and second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement for tonight?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have come to the city manager's report on the agenda item 21-226. And Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $175,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court program.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Council members, is there any discussion? Then we are ready for the vote. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-227. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting a Virginia Homeland Solutions Program grant in the amount of $4,080 for the Department of Housing and Community Development and appropriating said sum in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services for Portsmouth's continuum of care planning activities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-228. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $28,421,282 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for the use in accordance with the requirements of the Act.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion?
I have discussion.
Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Is this only half of the total funds? Just to make sure that the public knows, this is only half?
Yes, this is half. We will receive the next half in the following year.
I'm sorry.
This is the first half that will take us through '22, and then we will get another half a year from now.
Okay.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Lukasberg, ma'am, you have the floor.
That was my same question, so he beat me to it. But I wanted the public to be aware because I know we had spoke about 54 million, so.
Thank you, ma'am. And so we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-229. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting a Rescue Squad Assistant Fund Grant in the amount of $109,000 from the Office of Emergency Medical Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes? Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-230. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting a Rescue Squad Assistant Fund Grant in the amount of $6,929.82 from the Office of Emergency Medical Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion on this item?
I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
The prior, thank you, mayor. The prior ordinance, I just wondered why they were separated out. Just two different. They both came from the Rescue Squad Assistant Fund? Okay, two separate. Okay, great, thank you.
Are you okay now, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Deputy Clerk, well, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Right. Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-231. And Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting four-for-life funding in the amount of $73,356.40 from the Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for the use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to new business. Item 21-232. Boards and Commissions. And Vice Mayor Barnes, are there any appointments to bring forward for council's consideration?
There are no appointments today.
Thank you, sir. Moving along. Item 21-233. And Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
A resolution urging the General Assembly to commit funding to substantially reduce the burden of tolls of Hampton Roads residents by either buying back the ERC contract or otherwise significantly and permanently lowering tolls for the downtown, midtown tunnels. And we do have a speaker for this item.
Yes. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a speaker?
Our speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark.
Ms. Clark?
Good evening, mayor, members of council.
Ma'am, before you get started, could you please state your name and your address?
Joanne Clark, Churchland. I live in the Churchland section of Portsmouth.
Thank you. And you have five minutes.
Well, I'm real excited. We finally got some money. It's an exciting time. And congratulations to all of you for a good job, well done. This is exciting as well. I hope that maybe we can get a bus together of citizens who want to support this and go to the General Assembly and say, yes, please help us with this. This is a great day, and thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion from the members? Seeing none, I will make a comment to what Ms. Clark just indicated. Last week, I shared in our work session that I had the privilege of representing the city of Portsmouth at the Hampton Roads delegation meeting in the city of Hampton. That's the meeting where all of our state legislatures come together and we discuss issues and concerns that are pertinent to the cities here in Hampton Roads. Of course, our issue are still the tolls. And so I presented a resolution and an ask from the members of the delegation to help us in the city of Portsmouth to pay back those tolls and provide some relief for our citizens and our businesses. Just for your information, the state will realize about $2 billion in a surplus in addition to some more federal funding, which could be more. At the end of the day, we know that the tolls will increase over time, and it will continue to burden our citizens and our businesses in the city of Portsmouth. We, as your leaders, are going to always advocate for that to happen. One of the outcomes of the meeting was we did get a recognition. And as the General Assembly meets for their budgetary session in August, we will be there to voice those concerns and hopefully take away some of those dollars to reduce the tolls for the citizens of the city of Portsmouth and our region. So that's just summing up what happened last week. And I ask that you continue to pay attention to this matter. And if you are able to travel with us up to Richmond, we certainly will put out some information that we can provide to you. And thanks again. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item B. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this option. I mean, this item.
An ordinance accepting Virginia Gun Violence Intervention Program funds in the amount of $495,324 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to reduce gun violence. And we do have a speaker, Ms. Joanne Clark.
You wish to pass on this?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Council members, is there any discussion from our members on this item? One thing I will say pertaining to this item, this was something that we collaborated on with the community stakeholders, grassroots organizations, and the police department. We submitted a grant to the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and we were successful in the award of that grant in the amount of $495,324 to help the effort as we continue as a community to combat violence and gun violence. We recognize that we can't do it alone, and we need everybody on the team, everybody working in collaboration. We do have a plan. You'll hear more about that as we continue the discussion. But we want each and every one of the citizens here in this chamber and in our city to know that we do not take anything about the violence in our communities lightly. Everyone up here is committed to that end. And although we may not voice that concern as readily as some others, I assure you that that is our discussion every single day. And we are going to work together with the citizens, with law enforcement, with the Sheriff's Department, with all stakeholders. This is not going to be an overnight situation, I assure you. But it is one we're committed to. And we're going to make sure that we monitor the progress and what we do as a community. And I encourage everyone to participate and help us do this together.
Question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Was this allocation equitably distributed across the seven cities? Or was there more given to some other cities? Or how was the allocation put in place?
Madam City Manager?
As I recall, and I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Prince if I do not cover it adequately. But the city of Portsmouth was one of five recipients for this class of grants. So to my knowledge, it was not spread across the seven cities. It was just the city of Portsmouth.
Okay.
And Chief Prince, did you want to come forward and make any comments, sir, at this time?
Good evening. The grant was issued to the cities that were identified by the issuing agency as needing the most help. They based that on the statistics that we reported over the years. We had our people put together some documents and submitted for consideration stating what our case was, which included the numbers of homicides we experienced, the related gangs that we can identify, so on and so forth. And based on the information we submitted, we won that grant. We are sharing it with the people who are identified, that we have to, and people who plan on helping us combat crime in the city of Portsmouth.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a question from a member. Vice Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
Well, it wasn't to the police chief. I'm glad that we are getting these funds, but I'm hoping that the city itself can allocate some funds to these organizations out here who are doing the work in the street. Because I know often we say that we need to work together and we need to work with the organizations. But it seems like the organizations are the only one working, and the city's not. So I think it's important that we not only use this money, but we allocate some funds. Also, with the $28 million that we just got for this first year, I think we should allocate those funds to some of the people who are doing the work on the street and not just the ones that that we personally identify. There's a lot of people in the street that are doing good work in our street and really getting to these youth. And we need to make sure that they are properly funded. And we, like I said, we need to do our part and stop just saying that we need to have everybody else working together and not doing our part itself.
Chief, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Chief, could you come back? We have one other question from Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize, I mean, just wanted you to elaborate a little bit more. You said you did have to share these funds with special groups. I didn't know what groups these funds were being shared with. Is there a monthly expenditure or whatnot that you guys got to use as all these funds being allocated at once?
Okay, so what we've done, we've partnered with some not-for-profit organizations. Somebody who might be familiar with are Stop the Violence 757. We have partnered with the Friends of Portsmouth, Susan Fink. She's working with us. We've touched bases with big homies. I'm not sure where that part's at because there are other partners that we have to include in. When I say partners, I'm not just talking about those people. I'm talking about everything that Portsmouth has. We're going to partner with the Department of Social Services. We're partnering with the education branches that we can, high school, colleges. We want to be able to provide the people that we're going to contact and work with alternatives to the crime that we've all experienced in this city. And that's what we're doing. It's not just a small group. What we're doing right now with ACT NOW, as you've heard, is we're trying to reach everybody. It's not just a police problem. I've said it before and I'll continue to say it. This is a Portsmouth problem. And this grant is going to help us reach the people that we need to reach. I'm taking help from any and everybody that I can, that we can partner with, that's willing to chip in and help carry the burden. Did I answer your question, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Just a statement, because after you said some of those names, it came to my attention last week that it was a protest. And some of those organizations you mentioned wanted to participate in the protest. And I'm hearing that somebody on the city side is discouraging people from participating in protests because of money we're giving. I think that if we do that, I think whoever made that call, if we find out, they need to be fired.
Let me address the question, sir, first. I don't know where your sources are from, but certainly, we take any information that is against the efforts of the city and what we're trying to do very seriously. And so if you have some specifics, I suspect that you should bring that to the manager's attention. The other thing I want to say to everybody in the audience, we do have a decorum in the chamber. And although we respect the fact that you want to make statements and you will have an opportunity to speak if you signed up, we do ask that you refrain from just random outbursts because it's respect of the decorum and the chamber. Please. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second to approve this award.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And also, council members, do we have any other items to submit under items submitted by council? Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I want to make citizens aware that on Thursday, July the 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at I.C. Norcom High School, there'll be a Portsmouth Police Chief Community Forum. And this will be part of the citizen engagement component of the search and selection process for a new police chief. And our city manager is cordially inviting everyone in the community to participate. And if you have any questions, And if you have any questions, you can contact Human Resources at 757-393-8626. Once again, that's Thursday, this coming Thursday, July the 29th, at 6:00 PM at I C Norcom.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Lucasberg, ma'am?
Thank you, mayor. Have a couple announcements for our citizens. We will be hosting the August 3rd, the National Night Out. Wilson Ward Civic League, Craddock Civic League, AfroDogs. And also, at that event, the Hampton University Vaccination Mobile Unit will be there. The event is from 5:30 to 8:30 PM, and registration is required. Also, St. Mark Church of Deliverance will be hosting a National Night Out at that church on Tyreneck Road. We also have, the Portsmouth Public Library will be sponsoring a school supply drive for the Her Shelter. You can drop off your donations of school supplies at the Churchill and Branch Library to help kids in need, and that timeframe will be from August 3rd through the 31st. We also have a law enforcement Explorer Academy, if you have teens from age 13 to 16, Monday, August 23rd through Friday, August 27th. Some of the highlights will be law enforcement practices, teamwork and leadership, defensive tactics, physical training. And you will have to register, because there are only 30 slots available. So you can call Officer Washington on 757-235-5668, if you have a teen you would like to participate in that. And last Thursday, I was at Sunset Thursdays, had a good time with Better By Tuesday Band. This Thursday will be the janitors, if you're interested in that. The event starts at 6:30, and the people were already there at 5:30, so get there early if you're participating in that. And also, I'm not going to be attending the Portsmouth search for our chief police. And I want to call up Mr. LaVores Pace, he has a special presentation about Sunset Thursday.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
About seven years ago, you all allocated funding in the marketing budget for promotion and production of a weekday concert series that you requested, because you wanted more events in downtown Portsmouth. And so, you allocated the funding. Department of Marketing Communications and also Parks, Recreation and Leash Services at the time worked together to create Sunset Thursdays. And as it has worked out, it was a great day to produce such a series. During the time when we were down for COVID, everybody was asking about the Sunset Thursday Concert Series. Last, I'm happy to report to you that last Thursday, we had well over 5,000 people that attended the concert series. And so, I just want to applaud your efforts for giving us such a directive and making sure that we do what we need to do to make Portsmouth a place where people can come to enjoy concerts on the river. And so, as a result of that, I have a token of Parks and Recreation's appreciation for you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So does that mean we're required to wear them at the next event?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
First, I want to give a couple shout-outs. Shout-out to Portsmouth people for coming to Sunset Thursday. That was a major event. And I seen a lot of people, I saw a lot of pictures. Also, myself and Councilman Woodard attended the Portsmouth Police Department Retirement Annual Award Ceremony. I was able to bring greetings for the city. Great event. They celebrated this year and last year. Myself and the mayor also went to the V M L Conference. Got a lot of information that we think we can bring back to the city and help move the city forward. But also, I wanted to ask the city manager, can we get the fire chief to come speak to us the next meeting? I want to ask regarding the London Oaks incident that happened this weekend. I wanted to know if the gate, the fence around the area was a part of what actually happened as far as the casualty. So I was hoping we can get a presentation regarding that, to see if that's an issue as far as getting people, the police or the fire department inside their neighborhoods.
I definitely will make sure that we have that discussion, and whether that's an open or closed session, I'll make sure to talk with.
We want to make sure that we do it in official manner, too. We do have a consensus from everybody to make sure that's done, right? Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, very well. So if you would proceed, ma'am. And thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor. We appreciate that.
No problem. And that is all that I have, but I want to give a shout-out to all the people in the crowd, because you guys came out. It's been all over Facebook that we really need to come and address this crime in our city. And I'm happy to see all you guys come out. I'm looking forward to hearing what you guys have to say. And I want to apologize for the last meeting. I know a lot of people came in and talked and expressed their opinions, and it was voiceless up here. So I want to apologize on behalf of my councilmembers, because even though they may not have shown it with their voice, I do think they care.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other items from our councilmembers? Councilmember Moody, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, at that police retirement and awards function, there was one officer, and there were about, I think, 16 or 17 that were retirees. Of course, that's from going back last year as well. But there was one officer, who's an auxiliary officer, that served the city for 45 years. Richard Honeycutt. And I just think that's phenomenal, that someone would volunteer their services at really zero pay, just volunteerism, for 45 years. Just wanted to give a shout-out to Richard Honeycutt for his service.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. And one thing I did want to mention, in addition to items submitted, on this Thursday in the chamber at 11:30, we will be welcoming our young people from the Starbase Summer Camp, Camp Answer. All of the young people that attended Camp Answer will be showing up here in the chamber, and we will be celebrating the good work that they've done, working hard this summer in the schools. In addition, we will have an illustrator here, who will present each child and members of their family with a book illustrating space travel that she put together. And so, it's going to be a festive day. We're going to welcome them in the chamber. We're going to feed those young people, and we're going to show them that we do care. So I thank you, and if you're in the neighborhood, please stop by. We've now come to item 21. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Woodard, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. It's been communicated by the public, you know, the big concern of public safety. You know, this is for the city manager or any councilmember who wants to speak on this behalf, but how can we incorporate the sheriff in our efforts for public safety? What can we do to get all hands on deck in a matter that's, you know, so serious in our communities right now?
Madam Manager, would you please address that?
Sure. We are collaborating with the Sheriff's Department, and that's part of our responding to crime in the community, is working collaboratively together, looking for ways that we can leverage our resources and ensure we are working on those specific programs that are going to make a difference. As a matter of fact, the sheriff and I just met to discuss a program that's going to target high-crime areas. And he's going to use the reentry program that the Sheriff's Department has to hire individuals that have a connection in this community and work with our youth, as well as the adults and families, to design those programs to hopefully give them other choices. So we are aggressively working with the sheriff and other stakeholders as we look at this comprehensively.
And I appreciate, you know, all the proactive work, but is there anything that's targeted towards the gun violence, though?
Everything we do is targeted towards gun violence, crime in general. What we have to recognize is that this is, gun violence is a symptom. It is not the cause. And so, we have to look across the board as to how we look at our policies, how do we allocate our resources to ensure we are addressing core issues, and we are doing that across the city. And if I could, just elaborate just a little bit. I want to apologize to the citizens, to the mayor, the vice mayor, members of council, the staff, and our stakeholders. When I made a response in regards to a question about how long would it take to develop a strategy, and I responded six months. That six months had to do with the strategy, not the fact that the city was not going to take action, and take action now. So I want to clear that up. We are implementing different policies. We're thinking about this outside of the box. We're calling on the community to come, share ideas. We're implementing those ideas. We do not take this lightly. We are acting now. And there's more that needs to be done, and we're working on developing that comprehensive strategy so that positions us for additional funding.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
As far as those strategies and what we're implementing, can we get a presentation on that next meeting? Because I wasn't aware of anything that we was implementing right now.
Absolutely.
Also, it's important that whatever strategy that we include, we include the people who are being directly affected about. The moms who lost kids, the people in the neighborhood who we saying those strategies need to affect. Because right now, those are the people that's missing from the table.
And to that point, that's why I've done a full call-out for anyone to contact the city that has any suggestions. In addition to that, we're going to have a survey that we hand out at any forum that we attend. We're going out to civic associations and to get input. We're not going to have them come to us. We're going to start going out within the community to ask point-blank how we can help and work together to solve these issues.
When would that be starting?
It's starting now. We are developing the surveys right now.
I'm done, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items, Madam City Manager, under your report?
I've covered my items. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more thing, ma'am.
Go ahead. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
A part of that process, we want to also include the school board, so I do want to recognize our school board member, Lakeisha Clu Atkinson, in the building today.
Welcome. Madam Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair.
We have now come to item 21-235, non-agenda speakers. And I would like to remind all of our speakers that you have five minutes. Our first speaker is Mr. Ed Joyner. Mr. Joyner, sir, welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your address and let us know where you're coming from, and you have five minutes, sir.
Everybody knows me. You know that.
I know, Ed. But Ed, perhaps there could be one that doesn't. I don't want to miss that opportunity.
I don't want to take a roll call, but, you know.
Thank you, Ed.
You're a lost brother and a lost sister if you don't, you know.
Thank you, Ed.
A legend. He's here tonight. My name's Ed Joyner, and it's a pleasure being here. I'm representing the great N double H C P of Portsmouth and the Afro-American Historical Society. And I'd like to recognize the Honorable Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council, and the great citizens here of Portsmouth, Virginia. I come to you supporting the efforts of the Afro-American Society, which you hear from last week, and wanting to move the Colored Library downtown. We out in the boondocks, you know, and we would like to be in the greater part of the city. And we're backed not only by the great N double H C P and the Afro-American Society, but I'm standing here today with backing from some of the major organizations that are 100% behind me, that I belong to. And those organizations are the I C Norcom Alumni Association, the I C Norcom Alumni Athletes, the Omega Sapphire Fraternity, the Elks of the World, the Morgan State University Alumni Association, the Concerned Citizens of Portsmouth, the Pioneer Business Organization, my church, St. James Episcopal Church, the Cavalier Manor Civic League, the Southeastern Virginia Arts Association, the Afro-American Festival Committee, the Truxton Civic League, the Community and Church in Action, and the Afro-American Historical Society again. And as a promoter and a world-class booking agent, I've been around the world, visiting all the great museums, the Louvre in Paris, the Guggenheim in New York City, the Motel Museum in Detroit, the Black Wax Museum in Baltimore. And we want to have some type of establishment similar to what they have in these cities, representing Afro-Americans. I want you to know that in my many years in promoting great artists like Lionel Richie, Stevie Wonder, Cool in the Gang, Aretha Franklin, Tina Turner, just to name a few. These artists were great storytellers, as well as great performers and great songwriters. And they passed that particular gift down to me as being a great storyteller. And I'd like to tell you a great story tonight. And this story is called Gone But Not Forgotten. Gone For Not Forgotten begins with the great St. James Episcopal Church, which started the first library for Afro-Americans in the early 1940s. This library was for colored people, and from 1865 all the way to the 40s, we had no library. And the National Youth Administration funded this particular project, and it was for the St. James members and members of the community, and our kindergarten people. That library and that little portion of that room at St. James is gone but not forgotten. Our great parish is still there. We progress, turn to the next page in the chapter of the book. We find the Colored Library being established at 804 High Street. In this library was two great people, Bertha Edwards and Mrs. Driver. And we loved those two people, and we came every day. It was like an after-school study program. I was so impressed by this particular library, reading these great books about history, that when I went to college, I became a history major. And I also read the great books on all the great composers and all the great music people, which made me to want to become a promoter, following behind Jack Holmes and all the great promoters here during my time. And that experience in the library enabled me to become a world-class promoter that has taken me all over the world and booking every great artist in R and B history. And these things I share with you, because I have the aspect and background. Members of the City Council have told me that they are not fully in support of the Afro-American plan, that you have a bigger plan. We want to know tonight, or somewhere down the pipe, what is your plan? And when do you plan on implementing this great plan? And we want to know, if you have the expertise in the community to give you input in the plan, how many of you on the council have backgrounds in history? How many of you have backgrounds in black culture?
Mr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Joyner.
Yes.
Sir, your time is up, but you can go ahead and complete what you're saying.
Thank you.
And then we will respond, sir.
We want to move the library downtown. We don't want to be out in the boondocks. We want to get you to give us some input as to when you're going to come up with some type of plan. And I want to thank you for giving me this time. God bless each and every one of you. God bless our great citizens. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Madam City Manager, we'll get together with Mr. Joyner after the meeting and provide some information to him, okay? Our next speaker is Nathaniel Curry. Mr. Curry, sir, welcome.
How you doing?
Good, sir. And could you please state your address? And, sir, you have five minutes.
2220 Camden.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here on behalf of every black man and woman, mulatto, white. The violence in the city of Portsmouth, it can be controlled. The thing is, we need more of you, the council, to stand with us. The violence is not going on in your neighborhoods. It's going on in our neighborhoods. We got to wake up to a phone call. Some of us might even, don't even go to sleep at night. Sure, they're going to get their phone call saying their grandson or their son or brother has been shot and killed. We experienced a lot of deaths in the past couple of years. So I stand today in unison with all my brothers and sisters, today. And from this day forth, I still stand. I will not fall off. We missing a lot. A whole lot. We can't stand for this no more. I've been in the same shoes as these two gentlemen right here, the same shoes as everybody else holding pictures up right now. I've been shot in the head, cheek thrown over me. They thought I was dead out there at home, 1989. But I fought back. I'm a convicted felon, yes. But I still rose up, and I still fight to this day. The only thing that we ask is, y'all give us some type of help. We can do it ourselves, now don't get us wrong, but what's going to come along with that? We can go into the neighborhoods and police these neighborhoods, ourself. But y'all going to step in and say, oh, arrest them because they are sighting a riot? Or they trying to incite a riot? I don't mind standing on Front Street and going to jail. Been there, done that, over 20-plus years. This is my first time speaking on a platform like this. And I'm willing to keep standing, I'm willing to keep speaking, until something is done. It gots to be done. Or I'm willing to get out there and go into the neighborhoods to make sure that the older folks that I'm used to seeing when I was younger, growing up, sitting on the porch playing with the birds or just sitting out there having a conversation. My grandmother told me the other day, I took her to the doctor, she said, "Am I okay?" I said, "No, grandma, I'm going to come back around here, I'm going to sit on the porch." But she said, "Oh, no, baby. You go home." My grandmother scared to sit on the porch, and she live in Westburg. I'm trying to figure out the response time to these shootings. The response time to these deaths, all right? Now, to my knowledge, I understand that y'all don't have a, there's not enough officers on the force, to my knowledge. I don't know. But you have the funds. You have the money. Start hiring, start doing something. Or I'm just going to take Front Street and just be the force to go out there into the neighborhoods and see what's going on myself. I don't mind taking nobody with me if they willing to join me. We can go together. It don't make me no difference. And I'm not trying to say, oh, we're going to go out here and go to war with these youngsters. See, they young. I'm 45. We not trying to cause a war. We trying to defeat them from going to war. We got to keep them from going to war with each other. And the only way that I see that can happen is, open these rec centers back up, man. Open them back up. You got to open them back up. I done played baseball, football, everything in these neighborhoods. We don't have that no more. You can't even see a little kid riding they bike for real. Kids are scared. I'm a traveling barber. I talk to these youngsters out here. They are scared. They sit in the house, play the video games. Anytime there's a shooting, there's somebody, a child that I know. Somebody, a child that I done cut their hair. I done been around them. I done held conversations with them. Only thing I'm asking is, we can't take no more. Y'all got to do something, and it got to happen now.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I just want you to know, Mr. Curry, that I stand with you, because I am one of those people who have lost somebody in these streets. Two years ago, three years ago, I lost my 12-year-old cousin in these streets. And before I came on council, I came in front of council and talked to them, just like you just did. And it took a lot of heart to do it. And it was in 2017, I told the council, some members up here at the time, that if we don't do, put anything into place for our children, we're going to be losing some kids. And that came from a conversation that was had from kids who was getting shot at. The next year, I didn't know I was going to lose my cousin, my 12-year-old cousin. The truth is, is what we have now is the chickens coming home to roost. We haven't done anything in the city for years. And it didn't take for the question to be asked a couple of meetings ago for us to start really taking crime serious. It been happening for a long time, but somehow, we just realizing that it just started happening in our city. Maybe that's because it's not happening in those neighborhoods, like you just said. But I can tell you now, it's happened in my neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Catherine Howell. Ma'am, you have five minutes. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I kind of want to go off a little bit about the response times. I think most of the other cities have an app called Pulse Point, which when dispatch gets a call, they put it out to the app. They gives the location and what's going on. We know that our kids died in the street a month ago, less than a quarter of a mile away from an emergency room because emergency personnel had to stage a block away because PD couldn't make it on time to save these kids. And there are members in the community who would be willing to go get certified as EMTs and create our own crisis intervention teams, so we don't have to wait for PD to come in. So I think what I'm really saying is, there are people in this community who are willing to risk their own lives to keep kids from dying in our streets. And I think we need to have, we need to feel like that same energy is coming from our city leadership. And I don't think a lot of people feel like that, and I mean, no disrespect at all, but there is, it's too much. Kids are, they're scared. Councilman Woodard was at our rally last week, and he heard a 14-year-old speak. And that 14-year-old said, "He doesn't know if he's going to live to make it to 15." He doesn't know if he's going to live for next week. And it's going to take every single one of us in the community and in the leadership and in surrounding towns. You know, the urgency of now symposium is great, and I think it's wonderful, but whatever plan you come up with, everybody in this room right now, behind you, these are the people that's going to be implementing it. So can we get a seat at that table, too? And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is the housing crisis. About 5 million people nationwide are about to be homeless. And currently in Portsmouth, we have hundreds of people living on the streets, and that's getting ready to explode when the housing, when the eviction moratorium ends. And I'm just trying to figure out, other than the one homeless shelter that I think is in the works, what are you guys doing? You guys have $56.8 million of American Recovery Plan. Why not get that three-year public housing waitlist down? Why not build more affordable housing? Why not create subsidy programs? Because right now, people are being priced out of housing. And there's nowhere to go. And when we have thousands of people homeless paired with the violence, how many more people are going to die? Not just of heat, but because they're easy targets to pick off. So now we have drive-bys that unfortunately hit houses and thankfully don't necessarily kill people, but if we have thousands of people who are homeless, living in the streets, they're going to be an easy target, and it's going to be mass casualty situations. And we're going to have more of those pictures and more of those signs and more mourning mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters and cousins and teachers. And, you know, I wanted to not necessarily make a call out, but the public school district, too. You know, I've spoke with several people in that part and talking about prevention, right? We all talk about intervention, what we can do after the fact. Well, that's too late. How can we prevent some of these things? How can we get funds to help with preventing gun violence and housing crisis and poverty and all of these things that lead to the violence and the crime and the state of just fear and everything else that's going on? The Housing and Urban Development has a program. I don't remember exactly when the last time it was used, but I know that Baltimore is working on getting it. So basically, it's dollar housing programs where low-income people can buy a house for a dollar or $10. And then they are, there are subsidies and grants that they can get to fix it up. Which brings me into my next part, is how many houses have been condemned? How many people have been displaced from their homes while you have business owners who have 15, 20 businesses that are dilapidated, rundown, full of toxic mold, creating an environmental health hazard? Afton Square is the best example of this. That whole area, that should be a center of diversity and cultural exchange and celebration, but it's not.
Our next speaker is Melissa Williams. Ms. Williams? Thank you, ma'am, for coming, and you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to speak on the violence in the city of Portsmouth. And I heard you guys talking earlier about how you had grants allocated to assist in trying to combat that. But I feel like we need to look at the root cause of the problem. And in a city that I've been living in since I was seven, I'm 35 now, I have seen that we have some of the most highest poverty rates in the state of Virginia. A lot of these kids that are being killed due to gun violence come from these high poverty rates. A lot of them are children to either deceased parents, parents who are mass incarcerated or addicted to drugs, or some of them live in single-parent homes where the parents sometime have to work two or three jobs just to try to keep the lights and water on. And when the child is coming from that type of environment, that is a breeding ground for high crime. I feel like these children need, they need resources. These kids need resources. They need mental health help. Because a lot of these kids coming from this type of environment, a lot of them suffer with PTSD. And just saying that, oh, we're going to get the police involved, why can't we see that? We need to understand that a lot of the people that police, a lot of the officers that police Portsmouth, they're not even residents of Portsmouth. They don't live here. They don't understand the type of environment that a lot of these kids come from. So to get them to just come in and quote-unquote "police" these kids without actually taking the time to understand the environment that they come from, it's just, I don't think it's going to do, it's going to be beneficial to these children. We need resources. We don't need any more car washes. We live around here, it's nothing but food deserts around here. We don't have a Whole Foods store. We don't have a farmer's market, a Trader Joe's, or anything that's beneficial to the nutrition for these kids. We don't need any more food deserts. We need resources. We need mental health institutions. We need to open up, as that young man said, we need to open up the rec centers back up. They need to be opened back up. We need solutions. And we're tired of hearing the cliche, oh, we're going to work on this, we're going to do this. We want to see something now. We're tired. We're tired. I have to go to see one of my friends that I grew up with get buried on Thursday. On Thursday. An innocent bystander. He was a victim of a homicide through, by being an innocent bystander. I'm tired of this. I'm tired of this. I want the kids in our neighborhoods to be able to wake up and not have to worry about whether or not this is going to be the last day they take a breath. I'm tired of people who do not live where we live tell us what we should and should not be doing if you haven't walked them out in our shoes. That needs to change. And we ready for it to change now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Melissa, for giving you, giving us such an array of things to think about. I just really want to speak from the heart when I say, you know, I heard people talk about, you know, some of the council members aren't from some of the areas you're from. A lot of people in that audience know that I'm definitely from those areas that you are from. And I just want to really touch on what you're saying. A lot of the problems that's in Portsmouth, we know the problems. I think Councilman Battle, he made a statement, we always say, poor some people need to take care of Portsmouth problems. And I just want to let you know that you have some people on the council that understands where you're coming from. But I also want to empower the citizens and let them know that it's going to take more than just one or two or four people on this council to get this whole thing together, what's going on in the city. And I just got to be honest with you. I know a lot of people think that one person showing up can do, can make a difference, two people showing up can make a difference, three people showing up can make a difference. It's going to take a lot. And you guys got to understand that, you know, we haven't got here today because of the new council members, all the people that just got voted in. We did, you know, I mean, some of our past leadership has got us this far. You know, some of the people that we voted in has got us this far. And that's just the honest truth. That's just being transparent with you, you know. At the end of the day, when I leave here, I got to still go back to that neighborhood. I got to still go to my mom's house in that neighborhood, you know. So I get exactly what you're talking about. And when you were saying that you got to go bury a friend on Thursday, that's actually my partner's cousin. So I understand exactly where you're coming from. And, you know, as much as people want to sit here and act like these problems ain't got nothing to do with them, that problem came to my doorstep, okay? Okay, so as much as we think that ain't got nothing to do with us, it comes to your doorstep, and that's the black and the white community. I'm just letting you know. You can think, you can dodge it as much as you can, it'll come to your community. Okay, I mean, it'll come to your home. So I get what you're saying, but I think you was touching on some mental health as well. Councilman Battle and some other council members up here, we all allocated some funds to actually go to those programs. So I know you say you're tired of saying we're going to do things, but there's actually been money allocated in our budget to go to mental health as well. So we hear you loud and clear. I just want you to know that, you know, you're not by yourself. This do take some time. I know we running out of time. I know we running out of time, best believe. But you do have somebody here that works seven days a week. I just don't show up on Tuesday. I really work seven days a week to really see if I can make a difference throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes.
Again, I appreciate all the speakers. I'm just, I'm hoping that the council hears you guys as far as dealing with the root issues because one of the root issues is employment and jobs. And we need to bring quality jobs to the city of Portsmouth. We haven't done that. And none of the things, the actions that we've really made this year have done that as well. We need to make sure that Portsmouth residents are getting opportunities. There's things that we can do to really do that. As far as also dealing with the root issues, is also quality recreation. Even, for one, we don't open our rec centers on the weekends. That's where most of the issues occurring. I think we need to push to do something of that nature. But, you know, I get it. The root causes, the root issues are what's causing the crime. I always say, when a crime happens today, when somebody gets shot, when somebody go to jail, the problem didn't start today. It started when they was able to choose that lifestyle. We need to prevent them from choosing that lifestyle. And unfortunately, as much as we want to keep saying that all of the council hears it, we not. Some of us do.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Lakita Reese. Did I pronounce that right? Lakita? Did I pronounce your name right, ma'am?
It's Lakita.
Lakita?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Yes, ma'am. You have five minutes.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
So I'm going to speak on the crime rate as well. So I stay outside Gardens. July 18th, I had just got home. Y'all don't have to close your eyes, I just want to try to picture it. I have an 11-month-year-old boy, his name is Prince. I have a five-year-old, his name is Derek. And I have a seven-year-old named Joseph. We had just got home, got something to eat, day and night on playing, and I'm in the bathroom. Before I knew it, a bullet almost hit me. One almost hit, I'm sorry, I'm shaking. One almost hit my 12-month-old. And by the grace of God, the bullets shifted from hitting him and hitting me. And I had nothing to do with this shooting. Bullets, I'm on the floor telling my kids to get on the ground so they won't get hit. You feel hopeless because you cannot help your kids, you don't know what to do at this time. All you know is somebody's out there shooting, and you have nothing to do with it. The guy, they died July 18th. His name was Anthony Thomas. This is a picture of him. He died on my patio. He got, so now, when I go home, I have to picture this keep happening over and over and over again in my head. My kids have not been asleep. I have not been asleep. And I contacted my rental office, they still have not came to see the damages. They still have not fixed the patio. I asked them if they can move me to another unit. They told me if they move me, they have to move the whole community. I get that. But at the same time, me and my kids are dealing with this issue, are dealing with not sleeping, are dealing with not being able to look at these holes in the walls and not keep picturing it. My kids are talking about they getting shot in the head at five and seven years old. They should not be thinking about that. No, I do not let my kids go outside. My son have gained so much weight because he is not able to go outside. So my question to you is, if I have a rental office who's showing that they don't care, what do I supposed to do next? Because nobody has came to check on me or my kids. If I wouldn't have called, they wouldn't even really show interest. Again, my patio is still shot out. I have eight bullets in my house, then nothing is getting done. So as a 32-year-old mother who's working to take care of her kids, my question is, what do you do? What resources do you have? Again, we are suffering from not sleeping. I really have not had appetite, and I'm a big girl. So I just don't know what else to do. Again, it was by the grace of God that those bullets shifted for me and my kids. The police officers as well don't know how they missed us, but they did. I know because I'm blessed. But again, and seeing you in that situation, you don't know. And you should never want to be in a situation where you feel hopeless that you cannot help your kids, that you telling your kids to get on the ground so they don't hurt, to get hurt, and your kid sitting there crying, looking at you like, mommy, what's going on? And all they know is, I don't want to get shot in my head, or I don't want to die. Again, five and seven years old. And my 12-month-year-old was in his crib bouncing while I'm in the bathroom trying to get their help by not getting hit by a bullet as well. So again, this is the person, Anthony Thomas, that passed away on my patio. He had nothing to do with it. He was a bystander. I really didn't know him personally, but people have talked about him well, from what I've seen. And again, it shouldn't be him or me in a situation where we have nothing to do with it, where we almost getting hit by a bullet, or we about to get killed. So my thing is to y'all, I need help. My kids need help. I don't know what else to do. And I have not been asleep, so that's all I got to say, thank you.
Ms. Reese? Ms. Reese, could you remain there for a minute, ma'am? First of all, let me say that that's unacceptable in any situation. Madam City Manager, could you get Mr. Pace to get with Ms. Reese to put her in touch with resources that will be able to assist her? We want to help. Okay? We want to help you. So Mr. Pace is going to get with you, and we're going to get some information from you, and we're going to get you some resources, get you to talk to some folks, get your children to talk to some folks, so that we can begin to help heal you and your family.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Joyce White Tasby. Ms. Tasby, welcome, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, ma'am.
Shannon Govan, all the honorable city council members. I'm here on behalf of the NAACP and African History Committee in reference to the Portsmouth Colored Community Museum Library and hoping that you all consider moving it more closer in the downtown area to bring more awareness to our history. Because the people that have forgotten their past are doomed to repeat it. A lot of these things that are going on in the city of Portsmouth is because of the lack of understanding and knowledge of where they come from, how they got there, and the rich inheritance that they all have. It's, a lot of people don't even realize- even realize that the first African American policeman, Mr. Wilson, was killed and murdered in plain sight at a voter registration for our people. That Dr. Hugo Owens was ran out the city of Portsmouth because what he was doing for voting suppression and also for the tolls for people who wanted to vote and made it difficult and made them pay taxes. If they would attend this library and have it moved where it places more, that's effective, that the people can get to and have programming in there for our children as well as the adults as resources, even though it's a small building, it carries a rich history. I remember as a little girl, the first time I went, Marilyn Satter, he used to work for the Commonwealth Attorney Office, who was a, who was a lawyer. She and I walked down there one day. She said, let's go to the library. I'd never been to the library. Uh, and we weren't able to check out books because your parents had to sign. So what we did, we pulled a little trick. I said, you sign for me and I'll sign for you so that we could check out books. So we both were able to check out three books apiece. And it was so amazing to me because I went home and I'm, and believe it or not, I'm an avid reader. And as you know, you did attend the program that we hosted and produced for this same museum and library back in 2020 before the pandemic hit. We had people that came in from Troy, North Carolina who wanted to see it and participated. In fact, it was the first black mayor of this city or and also city council member. It was so much history. We had people that came in from Maryland and throughout the entire Hampton Roads area. Letting the same thing about the first year. Then we had people that came in from Atlanta who were celebrating the 50th year of the street team that Martin Luther King had. The lady remembered me and she knew me. She said, I flew down to help you do this, Joyce, because I have a video that shows that when we were kids, we were in Martin Luther King's youth group that went out and stirred the people concerning voter registration and other things. This library means a lot to me. And relocating it right in the middle of the city of Portsmouth, who knows could bring so many tourist people and help with the retail business that we seem to don't really have, along with other businesses that are not here in the city of Portsmouth. And because of that, I think it would be a great idea and a strategic plans that one should have and objectives that some of these, uh, the young ladies and the young men were talking about crime. If they would come to various things, hopefully at this library, that's a way to do it. And a lot of people don't know because of the Young People's Guild that I established in the city of Portsmouth, we were able during the time of Adderbarber, Jeffrey Wilson, Lincoln Park, we provided jobs, education, and housing for so many people and made sure they moved out of the housing, went back to school, went to college, and I partnered with some of the biggest and the best organizations and companies in this, in the United States. And they moved out, bought their homes and educated their children and went to college. So there is a way, and there is a way to get these things done. And we have a slogan with empowerment. Empower your family, you empower your neighbors. When you empower your neighbors, you empower your community. And when you empower your community, empower your city and everybody will win. So it first must begin within us. And I, I really believe that, that if you work on your own people, I don't want nobody coming in trying to help my children know their history. Tell our own story. And we don't need nobody to tell my story because can't nobody tell it like me. So I want to thank everybody for this opportunity you've given me to speak, Mayor. And you were at the portrayal places. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Randall. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Barry Randall, Prince Park, Brighton, Mount Herman, section of Portsmouth. I'm here to address the citizens. I'll be coming, preferably the next couple of council meetings to address the citizens. I really don't have anything to say to any of you guys sitting up there. Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I am standing here today to address the city at large since our council won't respond to these senseless killings of young African American children and young adults. It was 2016 that we stood in the same place with a black mayor and predominantly black council as is the same today. The mayor and members of council at that time was just as quiet then as this council is today. But you have to ask yourself, why is that? Do these people really don't care? I, I don't really believe that. The common denominator that bridges both of these councils together is that of a black PAC called the MLK. This PAC is responsible for most of the black representation that we have in our city. Not all, but the majority. During the 2016 bloodshed of black men, women, and children, I pleaded with the mayor and members of council to intervene and implement programs and bring entertainment to help curb crime. We are here in 2021, some five years later, with poor dilapidated buildings because I hear a lot of people saying, open up the rec center. Have you been in there? That we charge a fee to actually enter in. We have yet to have entertainment and please don't talk to me about Sunset Thursday because that don't count. Because of this, I was called a race baiter coon and other names, all because I was calling black leaders to accountability. And the reason why I'm talking to the citizens is because education is key. I heard Councilman Witter asked a question a little while ago. You know, that's my dude, but I don't know why he asked that question because this is another election year. The sheriff will come to your house and cook dinner for you, brother. Despite all of that, when one of these same leaders was facing with a felony charge, I spoke up for him, stood up for him, along with thousands of others. Yet at that time, he was speaking out against me for simply asking for help for these black men and women whose lives were being shot down in the street. Fast forward, when one of our state senior officials was being dragged and charges brought against her, I stood and defended her and we rallied over 500 people to her defense to say, not this time. Thousands of us stood up for her. When the former vice mayor, who I liked very much, and now councilwoman had charges against her, I, along with thousands of other citizens stood up for her. And the proof is in the thousands of votes that she got in this past election. So my question to you, black Portsmouth, when will you stand up and require the black leadership to take our lead and say like we said, not this time and say, not another son, not another daughter, not another child? It's only seven of them. And if thousands of us can stand for them, when will we require all seven of them to stand for us? They can't speak even if they wanted to because again, the powers to be have yet to give them permission. If you don't believe me, our mayor just said earlier, you all will be watching and see the tape. He said, just because we don't readily speak, that don't mean we don't care. But when it was time to choose a city manager, he readily spoke. He had a prepared statement that same night. But when y'all children are being gunned down in the street, he has nothing to say. They can't speak even if they wanted to because again, the powers to be will not give them permission. The powers to be said to the pastors in our city and to the politician, hold a press conference because they are messing with our people. Where aren't the citizens who live in public houses and at the poverty level, their people too? Obviously not, because they don't have anything to say to you unless they are coming down to ask you for your vote. When will you, black Portsmouth, stop allowing them to use buzzwords like equity and minority participation to make you feel as if they are for you? When will you stop only watching the white man and the Republicans and understand that some of the worst things that has ever happened to you in the city was done by people that look like you? When will you start loving yourself, black Portsmouth, and vote for those who respect everyone regardless of race, creed, or color? See, the problem is, and I'm going to take my seat because I know they want me to sit down because I speak truth to power. This group love for people to stay quiet when they say stay quiet and speak when they say speak. And that's why many won't say nothing. Because at the end of the day, they won't, especially the mayor, he want them to tap him and say, good boy.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Councilmember Battle. Sir, you have the floor.
Um, I like to ask all of your questions. Now, most of you know, I don't talk a lot and I don't brag a lot. But those of you who know me, know that I get things done. If there's any citizen in this city who has come to my office or dealt with me and I didn't try to improve the quality of life that they had, please stand. It don't take a lot of words to do things. I work. I get things done. I've been involved with more redevelopment than anyone in this city. And I could go further and further for, for the sake of time, I won't. But again, I don't talk. I do things. I get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Frank Allen. Sir, you have five minutes.
My name is Frank Allen. I live in the mid-city area. I've been working in faith-based social work for 30 years in the city of Portsmouth. And, um, my heart goes out to you guys because if, if we had the solution, we'd do it. And I realize that. And I want to see everyone succeed. That's just my nature. I want, I love it when people get along. I love it when people succeed. But I want to share with you and, um, some things that have challenged me is, one of the boys, had two boys in my truck this week. I run an organization with a, a strong organization with a budget. I don't keep an office. I work in the streets. We have good people on staff. My street's working with boys. Two boys in my truck this week that, um, were helping me. And, um, both of them, um, has been challenged with gang violence this week. One of the boys that was in my truck, um, when we were coming back from an event last week told me that, um, he's 20 years old. I buried his brother last May, um, from gun violence. And somebody walked by his baby's mama, pulled a pistol out, three boys pulled a pistol out and pulled the cover back from the crib, I mean, from the stroller and put it to his baby's head and looked at the baby's mama, caught it and said, is this Chemo's baby? I'm, I'm sorry, please strip that if you can. Is this so-and-so's baby? Then put the gun back and walked away. I didn't know what to tell him. And so I wanted you to hear his story tonight because he's not comfortable. And I want to say I appreciate the work that everybody's doing. And there is some policy that does need to be changed, no doubt. I agree with, um, Dr. Whitaker and his absent, that this, a lot of what we're seeing now is the process of hundreds of years of brutality and systemic stuff. But when your house is on fire, you don't call the building inspector and fust at them. You don't blame the contractor. You call the fire truck. If your house is burning really bad, the dispatch calls all of the fire departments. And if it's really bad, every neighbor, all hands on deck, anybody with a bucket, a water hose, a garden hose comes. Our house is on fire. And I know there's a lot of money coming down and everybody, when you throw money out, people are like buzzards. They come to it. But I want to challenge you to look at some of the smaller organizations and especially some of the storefront churches that are in these communities. And a lot of times, the storefront churches get a, a little bad, um, disrespect because they're small or their pastors aren't well educated. But each of these storefront churches that I know are usually run by women or men that are out raising money and taking their salary or their social security to keep it going. And they're right in the streets where it's happening. And these folks, when they get 10 members out of their community, they're doing what professionals would call hardcore social work, case management, uh, peer services, supportive services. They're really where the fire's at, but they're working with the hardest people. When the money comes down and you navigate it, think about those guys that are working. And let's go off the chart. This crime is off the chart. Let's go off the chart and try to empower people. There's a lot of communities that don't have rec centers. But there's, there's churches, sometimes it's an old white church with 10 or 12 people in it, in a big building, and they want to do something, but they don't know how. And they don't know who to approach. There's an opportunity. There's a place to have an after-school reading program. Use it to build bridges with everything that's going on. My greatest disappointment is, this is the first time in 30 years I've seen our city rally with Caucasians, African Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, and Asians. This is an opportunity to pull us together and it could be a win for everybody politically and for our communities. So I want to challenge you, a lot of people's hurt and angry and I thank you for your patience with us. But take this opportunity to pull together and think outside of the box. Cause there's a lot of people that have done so much with so long for so little. People think they can do anything with nothing. And with just a little resources and a little encouragement, I promise you, this community, this village can take care of itself. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to say that I, I totally agree with you. And while we still have a good crowd in here, I just want to say to you guys, don't let this be your last meeting. Continue to come, continue to speak. Um, that's what's going to really change what's going on in our city. And that's what's going to change some of the minds of the people on this council to make it a real issue if you continue to come down here and voice that concern. So don't stop coming. Continue to come.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Let me give everybody one important statement. The only way a person can control you is that they teach you to hate. If you stay away from their hatred and their shortcomings on color, and this one got more money than the other, you're free. Stay away from that hatred.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Our next speaker is Jesse Williams. Jesse Williams. Welcome, sir.
How you doing?
You have five minutes, Mr. Williams.
So I'm not here to tell y'all what to do with y'all money. Cause everybody behind me been telling y'all for a while now and nothing happened so far. I wanted to tell you about the relationship that I had with a police officer and a teacher. I was in the third grade. Space Jam just came out. Everybody saw it but me. I couldn't afford it. And we ain't had no rec centers. So, you know, we, we played around. We threw rocks, you know, stole out of stores and stuff like that, just to pass the time. And like every two weeks, this one white teacher named Miss Gilmore, she'd say, Jesse, you gotta stay back. I gotta talk to you. Everybody thought I was getting in trouble. At first I thought so too. And then she reached in her purse and she had a Ziploc bag of soap, toothpaste, and toothbrush. Cause she knew I needed it. But you know, I was raised, what goes on in the house stays in the house. So when I was hungry, I couldn't tell nobody. When I, when I was smelly, I couldn't tell nobody. I ate everything I ate at school because at home I ain't had nothing to eat there. Mama had three jobs. I saw her twice a week. Two bedroom, one apartment. So I had to raise my brothers and So I had to raise my brothers and sisters. So my heroes was the guys I seen on the corner getting money. I said, "If I can get what they got, I could take my mama out of this, this hellhole." So that was my goal. I sold crap by eleven, had my first job by nine, ten, working on Seventeenth Street in Virginia Beach. Catching the bus with my mama during the hot summers. And she paid me by giving me Pokemon cards. Every two days, she gave me Pokemon cards. And I save them to this day, and I say, "When I get kids, I'm, I'm gonna give them to my kids, because they should be worth some money by the time I get older." But, um, Space Jam came out and this white cop pulled up on me in the school and was like, "You wanna go see Space Jam?" You know, I'm raised, you see a cop, you know, we hate cops. Because every time I see them, they coming in the neighborhood. They either coming to take my brother, my cousin, my daddy. They coming to destroy. They ain't coming to be my friend. They coming, you know, push me around. Put me in handcuffs, show me what it feel like, and then take me out the squad car and tell me to go home. So, I trust that, that white woman. She was like, "Go ahead." I said, "All right." So I told my cousin, I said, "Tell mom I ain't coming home. I'm going to go see the movie." She never told my mama, though. So, he took me to see Space Jam. That's the first time I ever ate popcorn. That's the first time I had, uh, Coca-Cola. That was the first time I ever knew what a, a movie theater was. And then, I like, I loved the movie. I wanted to be like Michael Jordan. He took me home and he fed me. And he's a white cop. White wife, two, three white kids. I'm from the hood. We don't, white people don't do nothing for us. So I'm thinking, this, this, something ain't right. But he fed me, you know, his wife talked to me. You know, she gave me some of her son's, hand-me-down clothes. And I liked it that. So now I became, from wanting to be a drug dealer, to I want to be a police officer. And I wanted to change my community. So, I, I built a community, a, a friendship with that officer. And I always looked up to him. And then he, we moved. Because we moved, like, every four months, we moved. We moved, and I lost communication with him. By the age of eighteen, I went to prison. I came home at twenty-seven. My daughter was nine. She didn't know who I was when I gave her a hug. So from that point on, I've been feeding the homeless with my little paychecks that I get every two weeks. Taking care of my wife and my three daughters. I'm struggling like I don't know what. So I'm not here to ask y'all for money. I ain't here to, to preach to y'all. I ain't. The solution is already here. Y'all have the money. I seen what happened on January sixth when the monkeys climbed that wall. And every cop, even in Virginia Beach, went over there to save DC. So you press that button, Mr. Mayor. I'm pretty sure there'd be some cops that'd come from Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Newport News, give him another extra dollar or two, and then force something. But we don't have to. In order for peace, it must be war. This city been at war for too long. We've been at war for too long. But when we see police officers, we see enemies. We gotta get to youth. Do programs. Let them ride around with cops two, three hours out the day. Let them get the feel of it. Let them see that, oh, they not bad, like mama said. Like my brother said. Like my uncles and them dudes on the street said. They really cool. Because we touched one of them. The next one and the next one. Because kids only repep what they see. If they see them, them people on that street getting that money, and them cars, that's what they see. But they ride around like I did with that officer, and go to the movie with that officer. And he get to know me, and I gotta know him. I don't want to be where they at. I'd rather be a cop. So I'm not saying, "Let's make police officers..." I, I just came to tell you my story. You know, I, I ain't here to preach to you. I'm, I'm just a little black guy getting money. I work seven days, six days a week, seven days every two weeks.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Your time is up. But, but I do want to make one suggestion to you. Before you leave tonight, I want to talk to you. Because I've been listening to you, and you've got a very compelling story. And we have programs, and we have things in our city that help people to get retrained and to get living wage jobs, get a career, and be able to take care of their families. And I think that you're a candidate for something like that. So I need to talk to you before you leave.
Okay.
But, but, but thank you for your comments, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Doughty. How you doing, Mr. Doughty?
Good evening. How are you?
Welcome, sir. You have five minutes.
My name is Barry Doughty. I'm from the Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth, Virginia. And I want to start out by stating that I'm a third-generation resident of this beautiful city. And tonight, my concerns for this city has brought me here to speak about these issues and provide a methodology on how we can fix them. Today, I want to talk about how we can applaud our future and appreciate our past. Over the past few years, there have been an uptick in the amount of crime, specifically violent crime, in the city of Portsmouth. We are seeing our loves one shot and or murdered on a daily basis. Our law enforcement systems are strained. Our recreational facilities are dilapidated. And extracurricular activities for youth and young adults are limited. And the socioeconomic disparity within our city is growing every day. Our city is turning into a war zone. And, and we, our residents are modern-day captives in their own city. Our children are afraid to play in, in their neighborhoods in fear of being the next victim of violence. How can we say we are applauding our future if we do not give them a future to look forward to? Our future are deserving of a resolution today. Not in a few months, weeks, or days. Why can't we wait? Because they are too precious to us to wait. And our city is too valuable to put these issues on hold. Furthermore, in appreciating our past, we are in desperate need of preserving the strong, rich history that this beautiful city has developed. This is why I'm in support of the African-American Historical Society, developing an exhibit within the Portsmouth Welcome Center. How are these two issues tied together? I'm glad you asked. We, we have a tough time applauding our future if we do not appreciate our past. The history of Portsmouth should be important to all residents. Moreover, if we provide our future with the opportunity to know and be a part of our history, they'll be able to have a deep love and commitment to the city that has provided them so much. If they knew about the pilgrimage of many individuals who were buried in Mount Calvary Cemetery, and how many of them former slaves who decided that they wanted something special for themselves, and also for Portsmouth, Fort Tarsley, for the rights of some of us here today. Many of the individuals that, that laid there were the educators of our educators. They were the doctors of our doctors and the lawyers of our lawyers. Portsmouth, an important spot, excuse me, important stop on the underground railroad that led many to freedom. Portsmouth, a significant contributor to the fields of music, arts, science, and sports. We are a place that should be celebrated, especially the history of our prominent African-Americans. Some, some may say that the Welcome Center is not big enough to contain the history of Portsmouth African-Americans. I agree, but it's a great start. We, we can always expand on what we have. So here are my, here are my recommendations. Let's move ahead on, um, hiring a police chief, but not just a regular police chief. A police chief that looks like us, that understands our issues, that understands the socioeconomic background of individuals, residents of the city of Portsmouth. Let's develop a crime and a community impact team that has individuals on it that were significantly affected by the crime that occurs in our streets every day. Expand recreational services, and connect the Commonwealth Attorney Judicial Officers, officials to residents to assist in the eradication of the fear of the judicial system. Of course, hire more police, and then place the African-American society, excuse me, place the African-American exhibit inside of the Welcome Center. But also, provide a curriculum that incorporates the history of Portsmouth, their implementations, but also that involves the police individuals that are a part of the city of Portsmouth. If we, if they have a prime example of what police officers look like, should they not be afraid of them? I think that if we start early, that would divide, that would provide a good connection between those entities. I thank you all for your, for your time, your commitment, dedication to our city. And these are the things that we can do to applaud our future and appreciate our past.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Our next speaker is Mr. Elliot Hill.
Hey, um, how the council members doing?
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to say, heard that the, the kid that he's talking, she's talking about, his name Angel. And on that day, when we marched, he told him that he was fearful for his life. I got a text in my phone right now, where he hit me and he said, "They killed another one of my homeboys." His name was Little Melvin, right? It gets no really than that. Every day we come out here and we talking about gun violence out Portsmouth. I got locked up at the age of fifteen in Portsmouth. Did twenty-four years for a crime I didn't even commit. Luckily, Chapman, Tonya Chapman, and the parole boy understood my story. And they released me from prison, June the twenty-ninth. My first couple of weeks, you know where I was at? Walking through Portsmouth. You know why? Because I'm, I got firsthand sight of what victims' violence do. Because the person that kills the person, he comes to the penitentiary. The other one go to the graveyard. It's two losses. Then when they in that penitentiary, their mom got a funnel that hard-earned money into their kids, the money they don't got. And we here talking about violence in Portsmouth. Mr. Paul Battle, I was just in the office with him this morning. And he was giving us what we supposed to do. He right. He serve the people. Bro, Andre Burns, I like that, man. We out in Portsmouth. Daryl Redman, me, we out in Portsmouth. I'm talking about with the worst of the worst. And we out here trying to tell them, "Bro, put that gun down." But you know where at? Grassroots organizers, we got no help. You got dudes, I got an EBT card in my back pocket. I go get money off my EBT card. Get water, get food, and we go round Portsmouth. We go round Portsmouth. I just seen y'all site, where it said forty-four people got shot in July. Really? In Portsmouth with a population of ninety thousand? Really? And we saying that this is acceptable? Really? Come on, Portsmouth. Come on, Portsmouth. Four hundred thousand y'all giving to, to prevent gun violence out of fifty-eight million? Ha, let's see what that do. Let's see what that do. Because if you not coming up with solutions with us, we did a march. My brother came to me. I said, "Man, what the police say? Why the police ain't marching with us?" He said, "Man, somebody said the police can't even march with us." But yet, the police is the people who, who police in our community, right? But they have no connection with the community itself. So how am I gonna feel comfortable with going to the police, saying that my man's just got smoked? It don't make sense. It's a disconnection between the city of Portsmouth and the people who live in it. We don't trust you. There's a problem. If the community don't trust the leadership, you got a problem. And the problem, I seen them. I was the one that talked to them when they come to the penitentiary. And when they get out and they don't trust you, you know where they go back to? To the streets, right? Y'all might not got a deal with them. But me and bro do. Because you know why? My nieces, my nephews, every day is, is, is a threat to their life. You get one of these. And I left the penitentiary, they told me, "Hey, it's about public safety. Hey, we might not let you out of the penitentiary, because we don't know what you gonna do when you get out there. It's public safety." And to get out on the street, and we talking about public safety, and to see forty-four people got shot in July? Come on, man. There's a double standard going on somewhere.
Thank you, sir. You have, go ahead, Vice Mayor. You have a question?
Mr. Hill, I just want to say that it is a disconnect, and I don't trust these people either. Just to be completely honest with you. And I, I know, because I know somebody said it, and somebody's gonna say it. You know, we always say it starts at home. But in a perfect world, it does. But we don't live in a perfect world, and these kids don't get to pick their parents.
No question.
So what are we supposed to do? Let them suffer?
Question. No question.
And, and also, these kids are scared for their lives. I'm gonna be honest with you. Hell, I'm scared of my kids' lives. I don't let them go outside. Because I'm sitting on council with the view that we have, and I know we not doing nothing. Now, everybody's gonna tell you they care, because they say about, "Vozed by action shows that you care."
Action.
So I'm, I'm encourage you guys, keep coming out, keep speaking up, keep saying something, until we actually do something and show some match.
Thank you, big bro. Thank you, Val.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Whitaker, go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Oh, Mr. Hill, how you doing, sir? Before you, well, you go ahead and sit down if you want to. Um, yeah, like I say, I heard your story before, and, um, you know, I commend you for, you know, just, just being able to come out and, and just be a positive figure for, you know, our community. Um, I, I say this to you at the rally, and I say it to you again, um, you know, I don't have all the ideas. I don't think the council have all the ideas. But the thing is, I'll show up to make sure that I can learn and figure out exactly what we need to do. And, uh, once again, I, I do commend all the grassroots organizations that are doing things. And, um, anytime you need me, if you want to supply me with any information, like I say, some people in your circle, they know that, that I'm, I'm, you know, my ears is always open. And, and if we can always get together and do anything, you know, I'm, I'm here for you. But, um, it, it do start out with people like yourself who has experienced these things, and you can share those experiences with, um, someone like myself, and I can get to work for you. Because once again, I work for the stakeholders. I work for the, the city, the, the taxpayers. And I want you to know that. You know, I don't want you to think that I'm above you. I want you to know that I'm here to work for you.
Thank you, sir. And now, Mr. Tony Goodwin. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. City council member, city manager. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the neighborhood of Parkview. And, um, I come back here for the third time, coming up and saying, "I'm here for solutions and offering ideas to make these things, appease the, the crime that is going on in our neighborhood." It happened in our neighborhood Memorial Day, two weeks after that, right there around that school. So I still am a champion of implementing, uh, those signs of a safe school zone. School starts in forty-three days. And if we can show to the community that we actually are saying that those school zones are a safe place for those kids, the parents, the grandparents, the people in the neighborhood will probably feel a little bit better, and also be a little bit more proactive in calling in suspicious activities in those neighborhoods. It's not just about the punishment piece. I think it's a PR piece that we really can take, take, and take by the, uh, the reins right now and get that done today. Forty-three days, these kids go back to school. And I'm concerned about my fourteen-year-old going to school, because obviously, we've seen this activity going on this summer. So, with that said, I will also bring to you another idea, another solution that could possibly be implemented right away. I did see the letter from the FOP that came to- I did see the letter from the FOP that came to, um, City Manager Jones about the concern of, of, of lack of personnel in the police department. And now with, uh, the news story from Channel Three, uh, talking about Virginia Beach, basically cherry picking other cities', uh, staff and, and police force. And what's interesting about Portsmouth that not a lot of people know, our, our men and women in the, on, on the force, uh, in the police force are trained on all aspects of policing. So they're a very valuable asset to a community such as Virginia Beach to just simply pull away either for more money, for sign-on bonuses, and it's evident that they are leaving. So my encouragement to you is to consider the fact that we do have budgeted so many vacant positions that could be a set aside to incentivize some of our police officers to stay. And of course, the VHDA and HUD offer programs to community heroes, housing assistant grants for eight thousand dollars to buy a home in the community that they serve. HUD, of course, uh, offering a good neighbor next door. So the programs are there, the framework and structure is there. Let's offer a possibility, because we're in a crisis mode. We're losing police officers to locals, other cities that can pay more, that can incentivize them and take them right off of our streets. Those are people that have ba- basically been trained by our city dollars, by our taxpayers, and they're now leaving to go to better, greener pastures. So my god, my, my hope is that if we can possibly take and put some money aside, giving them some assistance in their housing as a benefit to keep them here in the short term to possibly implement something that will keep our, our talent here in our city and taking care of our people and being part of that community and being part of the solution, I think it'll go a long way by retaining those officers. So my point was hopefully made, uh, in the short order. I don't really have any much, much more to say. I just want to basically be part of the solution and help identify what's going to be the highest and best and most importantly, the fastest solution to a safer Portsmouth.
Vice Mayor, you have the floor, sir, and then you, Councilman Woodard.
I just want the citizens to know that we are hiring police officers. We, we have a, um, a campaign out right now hiring police officers. I don't want anybody to think that we're not hiring police officers.
Thank you, sir. Um, Councilmember Woodard?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, I guess, piggyback off that as well. Um, you know, we do have a campaign that's going on. Laborious Pace actually checked me, uh, a couple of days ago about that as well because I did ask him about it. And, um, it's, uh, just to speak to a, a little point, me and the city manager talked about incentives for, um, public safety workers actually working in the, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, actually buying house and actually living in the city that they protect. So, uh, that is actually in the works. I want you to know that. Uh, it's a great plan and, um, it also will, will get people to buy into the community more. I think we've been hearing a lot of that from our citizens, that you want, uh, where you, you're saying that police officers or firemen would not, don't actually know the problems that's going on within the city. So a program like that itself, an incentive, will actually help bridge that gap and create that bond with the community, uh, as a whole. So, um, I think that's an excellent idea and it's something that's already in the works and, and being talked about.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, oh, Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Not all of our police officers, um, fall under this category, but we hire too many police officers from Cornhill, Nebraska, from Mississippi Jubilee, folk who, who don't have a clue about serving the population that they're serving. And they see this as just an opportunity to move forward when they come here. They may have been rejected in Norfolk and Virginia Beach for the academy and folk will say, "Well, go to Portsmouth, they'll hire anybody." And they come here and they got no intentions of doing anything but getting this free hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of training and moving on. So what we have in place is a terrible policy of hiring. See, our city has to revamp an awful lot of policies if we're gonna get where you're going, and that's one of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnes?
I think, um, not only when it comes to the police department, but that's everything in this city when it comes to positions. No disrespect to anybody on the dice, but we just had a hiring process where everybody up here said they didn't want anybody from Portsmouth. So it's, it's also a mindset from the city council up here. It's not just that, it's, it's this mindset of council.
Well, well, first of all, Vice Mayor, I, I will take issue with that. I don't know, once again, where you got that information from.
By all means.
Hold on, sir, hold on, I have the floor. I have the floor. There is no one to my knowledge that has made any statement like that about any of our citizens. Now, if you have something specific, we don't need to talk in parables. If you have something specific, you need to bring forth specific names so we can address it.
I can bring forth a specific name, you. Um, when it came to our city manager position.
Sir, you are out of order.
You just asked me a question.
Yeah, but I, 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 I said, "We can address it in a proper," but you're out of, you're out of order right now. You are out of order. And if you persist to be out of order, I will have you removed from this meeting. Our next speaker.
I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Sanja Williams.
Don't kick me out.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Sanjay Williams. I am a resident of the London Oaks Housing Community. The past eighteen months, year and a half, has been devastating not only for my community but our community of Portsmouth as a whole. The gun violence, the gang violence is totally out of hand. A lot of people acting like they don't know what's going on. It's gangs all over our city and they ain't playing. They don't care about your status, your color, or nothing else. They don't care about the babies in the houses, and I know because Laquita Reese is my niece. Her mother was with me the night we got the call from her hysterically crying and screaming in the phone fearing for her and her children's lives. I have had to run through my neighborhood and aid gun victims on the ground. I've seen it firsthand, praying over young black men in my neighborhood, asking God to spare them, heal them, save them. And we got to wait, you talk about that gate, DeAndre? We got to wait for the paramedics and the fire department and the, and whoever else to get there because the Virginia Avenue exit is blocked off. That means they got to ride all the way around to get in through Hash Street or Mount Vernon, taking minutes off of people's lives. Okay? That back court on Virginia Avenue is where all our senior citizens is posted at. So why you got them all the way in the back of the community when the rescuers got to come through the front of the community? Heart attacks is heart attacks. Gunshots is gunshots. Their lives matter. Our lives matter. My life matter. When my son and my brothers and them come to my house, they got to stay strapped up. They strapped. I'm strapped. When I get out my vehicle, I'm strapped. You know why? Because I'm scared. I'm in fear of my life or which little gang banger gonna run up and say, "Gear it up." Or how about my niece from out of town coming to visit, driving down Frederick Boulevard when a silver truck pull up beside her and put guns out the window at her and her three children in the vehicle? We need better programs. The foot soldiers that's out here on these streets, Daryl Redman and all the rest of them, I tip my hat off to them because they are in those neighborhoods. I don't see, two minutes, any council members, in those neighborhoods. I don't see y'all. I don't see the people who can make a difference in my neighborhood. Election time? No, I don't need that. What we need is funding for these organizations that's out here putting their back against the wall, like that gentleman said. We got some soldiers. We got some soldiers. And back in the day, we had them too, called the Black Panther Party. They protected their own in their own neighborhoods. Do we got to go back there? Do we got to organize like that? Because we will, because we tired. So we asking you, our city leaders, step up or step aside? Step up or step aside? Give us the authority to do what we got to do without being harassed by the police because he's right. When they come out them neighborhoods and talk to them brothers, you trespassing. Or they harassing them, running up on them. Let me see your ID. You can't be out here, the fruit of Islam and the Muslims came to my neighborhood for them to say, they told them they could no longer come out there to these brothers. These are positive black men who makes changes happen, but you say they trespassing? Well, they can't trespass if you got invitation. I give you my invitation. Come sit up in front of my apartment. And they did. And it was awesome when that little young black boy looked up and said, "What do I got to do to be like you?" Because he seen a positive black man, something he ain't used to. We need better things in place. These children have PTSD. I deal with children every single day. We got children in sixth grade reading on pre, pre-primar level. Come on now, Portsmouth. Step up or step aside?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is.
Am I allowed to talk?
You have the floor, sir.
Um, to our city manager, um, regarding the, the London Oaks fencing, I wanted to know if, if you can look and do some research, see if anything we can do regarding that because it's clear that it is a, a safety issue. So I would definitely like to see what we can do. Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Ms. Edrika Oliver. Ms. Oliver, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Uh, my name is Edrika Oliver and I'm from the Prentice Park area of Portsmouth. And, um, my notes are kind of all over the place, but I'm gonna be as brief and to the point as I can. An article from, um, November twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-five in the Virginia Pilot, the headline read, "So far in nineteen ninety-five, a record thirty-seven people have been slain. Portsmouth's bloodiest year, many of the killings have been common thread. Point blank, point blank gunshots in a public place at night." Well, what we're living right now is very similar, but there's a big difference. It's no longer at night. It's no longer point blank. It's drive-bys in the daytime. I live, um, like I said, in Prentice Park. There's a corner store a half a block from my house. Um, I have a sixteen-year-old who's not in the streets. He's not in the game. I don't let him go to the corner store unless I'm standing watching him or I notify everybody along the block, "Hey, my son coming to the store, watch him." My son, and I grew up in that neighborhood. My grandfather built that house from the ground up. It has changed drastically. My neighbors called the police constantly. They ride through. Nothing is done. They speak, they keep going. But during the pandemic, when, um, the sheriffs were allowed to become, um, law enforcement, we saw the sheriffs. The sheriffs pulled up, they ran people off our block. When the sheriffs came, people moved like it was the police or the feds. That's what we need re-employed now. Y'all don't have enough police, but you have a sheriff department who are Virginia State Certified Police if I'm not mistaken, correct? Use them. That's what we need done now. Um, as far as six months, I'm glad you clarified that you were not saying you all were waiting six months, but in that, in that timeframe, while y'all are studying, I would like for y'all to take a look at Baltimore. Look at the restorative justice program in there. Look at, and let's be proactive instead of reactive like Baltimore because y'all about to build a casino in the Portsmouth? Baltimore's crime rate, murder rate doubled in two thousand fifteen. Horseshoe was built in two thousand fourteen. So you all need to get ahead of the problem because it's about to happen in your city. A casino is the worst thing you are ever allowed to happen to the city. Okay? The worst. It's not even here yet. So I'm asking y'all to get ahead of the problem because see, it's gonna be a problem if my sixteen-year-old gets caught in a random drive-by. There's not, not jail or hell that can hold me. I'm saying that up front. All right, um, we need immediate and strict, uh, curfew enforcement, all right? Your city code twenty-four-three says that seventeen-year-old under needs to be in the house by, um, eleven o'clock and it's governed by, uh, the Virginia Code sixteen-point-one-two-seventy-eight-point-six. I need you all, when y'all go to gym, uh, to the General Assembly to ask our governor to declare a state of emergency in Portsmouth so you could, um, be a little more strict on that code. Lower the, um, curfew to nine o'clock in Portsmouth for the rest of the summer because what y'all are about to do is turn these killers over into the schools and I work in these schools. I don't want to have to wear bulletproof vests to school and I work in elementary school. Back to restorative justice, I have written out a program for my school in particular that I plan in my position to utilize next year, but it's something that you all need to have in place at least by midterm, January, February of next school year, to have in our middle schools and our high schools. Because what restorative justice of, um, how it goes about, instead of looking at punishment, everybody wants to punish the gangs. You need to find out the reason for these gangs. First of all, we're not trying to punish kids, we want to restore our kids. Because another difference between now and ninety-five is the ages. The people in ninety-five were in their twenties, thirties. These kids are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old and they're using military-grade weapons that they don't even know how to set the sights on. That's why innocent people are getting shot because they're aiming there, but it's hitting there. Okay? There's something that needs to be done about that. And finally, because I'm running low on time, of that four hundred ninety-five, uh, two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars that you all have, we need to see mobiles and community policing. We need a police precinct, a mobile, a presence in every last one of these neighborhoods. London Oaks, Dale's Home, the corner store by my house, South Side. Because see, in ninety-five, I got that phone call, I was away in college, got a phone call on November first of ninety-five that my friend was murdered Halloween night in South Side. So we need to see the police there and there needs to be a community program that connects the parents. Like one lady said, "I'm willing to get out in the streets, but like I also said, my son not the one out there." So I need some of the people whose kids are the problem or are the targets because I feel like my son could be a target just because he goes outside. He doesn't ride his bike, it's locked up in my backyard because I'm scared. And I should not be scared. I shouldn't have to run for my city. I had to come back here and now I'm ready to leave again. So I ask you all to look at those, uh, three things and let's do something about it before they go back to school next year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is, I want to make sure I pronounced this name correct. Is it Saran Day?
Saran.
Saran?
Yes.
Saran Day?
Yes, it's like Saran.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Day. You have five minutes, ma'am.
All right. I firstly want to say that, um, talking to you, Mr. Glover, um, when I first met you, I saw you on Facebook and I saw you in an altercation and I was like, "I don't think I'm gonna like this guy." But I get to meet you today and I'm watching you and I'm thankful that I had a chance to come here today. My son was shot June twentieth, um, twenty-one, um, on Father's Day. He got shot in Churchland and he was at his home playing the game. And a young girl that he knows, um, came over, brought two guys, a sixteen and a seventeen-year-old with a forty caliber, and they said, "Well, we gonna just rob you." And he didn't have anything, so, uh, they shot my son in the back. And he fought for his life for three weeks at Norfolk General Hospital. He is now home. Thank God for that. My thing today is I had so much to say about the crime. I think everything has been covered, but what I want to talk about is you guys. I want to take a moment. I'm a certified licensed mental health professional. I am an educator. I taught in Portsmouth for nine years. I am the volleyball coach for Crowell Middle School. I had property that I walked away from in twenty nineteen because of the violence that was in Prentice Park. So now I, my, I moved to Carrolltown, Virginia, brought my kids with me. When my son got out of college, he went right back to Portsmouth. I took him out of Portsmouth, praying to God. I told him, "Don't go to Portsmouth." But he graduated in twenty eighteen from Wilson High School. He was a state wrestling champ for the city of Portsmouth. Um, he went away to firm college. He came home because he had high blood pressure. He's only home. He was on a scholarship for football because his blood pressure was high. So he said, "Mom, get my first apartment, I'm gonna work and I'm gonna live in Portsmouth in Churchland." And he- And he was only there three months and he was shot. My thing today is that, City Council, I'm asking y'all to come together. There's a lot of discourse on this here panel right here. That's bigger than any other problems that we got out here, where fighting for our children, advocating for our children. I need for you guys to get together on one accord. You got a lot of young soldiers, Mr. Glover. And I believe in you, like I'm watching you, like I say, I don't care what I hear, I'm watching you. And I know you're hurt sometimes, people are hard on you. You get a lot of smack because of the fact of your ways. You're, you're, you're upright guy, you have it in you. But right now you are the leader, you are the leader. And you're gonna have to pull your team together because if not, we're gonna lose this battle. And if this war that's going on in the street, going to your schools, we are all in trouble. None of us are safe, none of our, none of your children, your grandchildren, none of them are safe. So what I'm asking is that you put some of these, these two young dudes right here, they, they powerhouses. And I know they get on your nerves. I know they get on your nerves and they piss you off a lot. But let me tell you something, use them soldiers. You get, I don't care if you pulling, just you and you, y'all going on a, a retreat. Take some of that money, take a couple hundred dollars and y'all go on a retreat and you work with them two young dudes. They seem like they probably don't respect you, but they do. But they tired, they've seen some things you might not have seen. So I need for you guys to work together. You have it in you, Mr. Glover, you're the guy. You got this position, I don't give a damn what they say. They say, oh, Glover got this and Glover got the position because he this and that. A lot of people don't like that, they mad. But show them, you can do it, Mr. Glover. I believe in you. And there's a lot of people that do believe in you. And if they hate, let them hate. But right now, use these two guys right here. Y'all come together and let's please stop this violence. My baby threw up three liters of blood in my face. I watched my baby dying in the hospital. I can't even pull the stuff up right now. But I want to work with you guys. I, I'm still a, a city of Portsmouth public schools worker. I've been doing that for over 15 years. I would like to help you. I would like that if you take some of that money and put into the C7 program that I developed, um, is curfew 757 and it is putting emphasis on enforcing the curfew law. Because as an educator, I have birthed a lot of my students. Um, as a mother, I was proactive versus reactive and they still shot my son. And the boy that shot my son is a 17-year-old. And guess what? The 17-year-old that shot my son, I taught him at Crowlock Middle School. And while he's in jail for shooting my son with a 40 caliber, the bullet this big, my son still survived because he's a healthy young man. He was indicted for murder for a killing in Portsmouth in September. And the boy that he was with, when he shot and killed that boy in September of 2020, that boy is indicted for murder in Norfolk. They non-processed it because the witness wouldn't come to court. So what I'm saying is that work together, I'm asking you all, and you didn't knew later, madam. Welcome to the city of Portsmouth. You got a lot on your shoulders and you got a lot to stand up for. Mr. Battle, you've been doing this for years. Take, you got a young and old up here. You got black, white, you got a whole team of people, y'all need to work together. We need to see that first because ain't nothing gonna happen if y'all don't work together.
Thank you Saran. And, and, and I want you to know that your comments are certainly heartfelt. You know, we get to listen at a lot of conversations up here. Um, you are right. I'm a son, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather. And contrary to popular belief, that some of the stories that you've heard coming from this day is tonight from individuals, you know, people don't know everyone's story up here. And everyone up here has a story. My mother raised six kids all by herself. She worked three jobs. She didn't have a big education. So, and I grew up in public housing, so what I want you all to understand is we, none of us are beyond this. None of us think of this as it's a us against them proposition. We are all in this together. Because I can be at the same risk and my children and my grandchildren and my wife and everybody else can be at the same risk as your children. So I just want y'all to be clear, there is no animosity with me. And I understand what you said exactly and I agree with it. The time is now for us to work together and I intend to do that. So thank you for reminding me and I appreciate you and I look forward to talking to you some more. Thank you. Our next speaker is Cedric Crado. Afternoon, sir. You have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm here, on 725 Bow Street, my address. I'm here to remind people or the City Council about two young men that got murdered, one in 2016. I'm sorry, one in 2014 and one in 2017. Corey and Emmanuel Terry. Do you know those guys? Do you know them? See, this is heartfelt. This is my son's best friend. Them guys ate at my house, they played with my sons. I wanted to say that first before I got into my little spiel. There's a lot going on and one thing is not going on is accountability. And accountability, not just with the City Council, accountability of the community. Because a lot of things that are going on in community, people know, they just won't say. See, the poverty level right now in the city of Portsmouth for black people is real, real low. And there's a study that's being done, that's been done with the Center of, um, Budget and Policy. And it's saying that low socioeconomic status does matter when it come to crime rates. So I'm here to say, we need to pay attention. There were 632 killings in Chicago this past Saturday. Where there's smoke, there's fire. I see smoke in the city of Portsmouth. I don't think it's a state, state of emergency. I really don't. Because when I came up, it was a lot of killings then. It wasn't as many as like in Chicago, but we've seen the violence. We've seen this before, but what has been done? What are the programs? What are we doing? Leadership is leadership. It's the bottom line. You have to lead in order for it to be led. I don't see personally, a lot of people being willing to be led. I used to, I was in the United States Army for nine years and I couldn't go against my commander. I had to pay attention to the SOPs and all the policies and procedures that I had to follow. And sometimes you just gotta stay in long, stay in line, soldiers, and listen to the captain. Because the only way you gonna get something done is to start with the head and not the tail. The only way we gonna see results with all this violence that we supposedly, that is going out of control, that we've all seen before, is somebody has to take the lead. And it has to be the captain. Has to be the, be the leader that's up front. I also wanted to state that our Portsmouth is 52% African-American. This city is populated by black folks, but it don't mean we supposed to denigrate our brothers and sisters, white, yellow, brown, or whatever. They are part of this community. They helped build this community. So the first thing is, we have, that, that, the, the diversity is a must because we live amongst each other. And, and until we come together diversely in our planning and our strategic, uh, our strategies, there's not gonna be a change. There, there's a bill though, there's a law that's been passed with the infrastructure from the government. It's a big old billion-dollar bill. How much is the city of Portsmouth gonna, uh, benefit from that? I don't, I haven't heard any plans on trade schools. Currently, I'm an inspector on the HRBT bridge. And when I look around, I don't see young folks. Because though, that, that you guys say that's our future, I don't see no young folks. We should have some training because those funds are getting allocated through the masses. Where are the programs? Where are we gonna start? I don't see it. See, we talking, I hear a whole bunch of no, but I hear no, no substance. I'm looking for results. People are looking for results. We looking for substance because nothing's gonna change. Everything's gonna stay the same. And I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Crado. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Terranova Clark. I think, she left? Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Tamika Pigford. Ms. Pigford, ma'am, welcome. You have five minutes.
Good evening. Um, I grew up in Portsmouth, but now I have, um, we bought a home in Suffolk. Um, my son was shot and killed in October of 2020. Um, I just want to speak on the gun, gun violence because I did, I have noticed that it has risen drastically um, to the forefront of our communities. Um, I try to get my son away from Portsmouth, even though I know violence is everywhere. I try to get him because we stayed in Westbury, so when we move, we move to Suffolk. So I try to get him away, but he's still, all his friends were here, so he still stayed here. Um, I also want, I wanted to say, um, we need some, some type of prevention for like witness protection because my son, um, killer case, well, my son's case was non-processed um, because the witness was afraid to come to court. She was being threatened. Um, there was lighting fires in the back of her home, so she had to move. Um, so they non-processed the case and because there was no safety and protection for the witness. So I think that we need like curfew, as Saran said, to piggyback off that. Um, curfews for our kids, daytime, some type of resources for them. Even when my son was living, um, sometimes he was missed curfew. I called the court services to try to get different resources for my son. They asked if he had any priors, when the answer was no, there was nothing that could be done. Um, I called a school. Um, and so I just want some type of, um, stuff so, so the cases won't be just gone flat or just thrown out because the witnesses, we need other resources that can be done. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pigford. And our, our, our next speaker is Ms. Rhoda Young. Welcome, Ms. Young. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon to each and every last one of you guys. And once again, it's my pleasure to stand before each and every last one of you guys. I kind of like worked with a lot of y'all before or y'all know a lot of me because I come into y'all community. I always felt welcomed to Portsmouth, more than my own city that I was born and raised Norfolk, Virginia. Y'all have welcomed me in, even to your city council meeting. When y'all was ready for office, y'all utilized my service. When y'all have events, y'all call me over, cross the bridge and through the river to come to Portsmouth. For some reason, I feel so driven to be here with you guys. Because it's a crisis that's going on in this beautiful city. Some may be thinking and looking back and thinking I come here to attack y'all, but I have not. I come here in peace to assist y'all. But yet I would be embarrassed to sit where you are and so many crimes are happening underneath your watch. It's time that we figure this thing out and y'all all have the capability to do so. Y'all the greatness of Portsmouth, Virginia. Wear your crown and word well. Come together, because I'm afraid to report y'all's stories. Have you not seen me out here anymore? I'm in Norfolk, I'm in Virginia Beach, I'm in Suffolk, wherever they call. But yet, what happened to Rhoda Young live in Portsmouth? It ain't safe in Portsmouth, Virginia. Not even for me. I'm afraid to come into your community. I'm afraid to walk out your building today. Cause I don't know what your people are capable of doing. We wake up in the morning, Portsmouth, another murder. In the afternoon, breaking news, Portsmouth, Virginia, another murder in the daytime. I have heard y'all's stories in the background. I don't report on murders. Something I don't like to do. I know South Side is your dangerous, most dangerous community. You want your citizens to feel safe, take over South Side first. Go out South Side and let them know Portsmouth, Virginia ain't playing with you. Send the tactical crew through there, clean up South Side. And once you clean up South Side, you'll slowly start cleaning up Portsmouth, Virginia. On Rhoda Young, Rhoda Young live, and I love each and every last one of you. You're doing an outstanding job, but we as a team can do better.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Um, I, I reserved, um, my comments for the end and I'm sorry that so many citizens have left that have spoken, but I appreciate all of the comments that have come from you. And what I'm looking at, it, you know, it's South Side, it's Cavalier Manor, it's London Oaks, it's Prentice Park, it's, it's Westbury, it's everywhere. Um, the crime is everywhere and we have heard, uh, your comments. And we are coming together as a council to come up with some solutions. I've heard some very good solutions, I've heard some very good responses. Um, some that have, you know, really, uh, torn at my heartstrings tonight for the comments that you have made. And, you know, we wouldn't be here if we weren't concerned and interested, interested in changing the outlook on our city. I lived in Virginia Beach for 14 years after I got married. And my husband wanted to know, why did I want to come back to Portsmouth? Because this is where I was born and this is where I feel like I can make a difference. So I'm sitting here and I'm looking like I'm quiet, it's not. I'm taking it all in and trying to find out how we can come up with solutions. So it's not that we are not interested or we're not trying to come up with solutions. This is something very new. Um, one speaker mentioned that the gun violence happened when they was in ages of 20 and 25. And now it's lowered, it's into the 13 and 14. What is it gonna be next? Is it gonna be eight-year-olds and six-year-olds? You know, we, we need to learn from what is going on and come up with some solutions. We, we have come together as a council to determine that we want to have a retreat. I think this is one of the conversations that we need to have first and foremost at our retreat. Um, I looked at, uh, something that Chief Larry Boone from over the Norfolk side, uh, put out to me today uh, on a, a round table that all of the chiefs had. So we're all trying to come together and to come up with some solutions, so, solutions. We need you, we need us. I'm a member on the Stop Inc. board and one of the things that we talk about on that board is the H2E2. So that's housing and health and education and employment. And then the socioeconomic status of the people and the poverty of the people, all of these things are what we need to address. It's not just one solution for us to come out to South Side. If I walk out there and I'm, I'm in solidarity and I have been out to South Side. Mr. Barry Randall held a, a function last year and I was there. Whenever I'm invited to something, I go. But I don't just, you know, find myself that, you know, somebody got shot, I'm gonna go down there and try to see what's going on. We need to come together, we are coming together. We wouldn't be here if we was concerned, if we weren't concerned. Because this is a job that's really pretty much, you all elected us to do. But you elected us to be your leaders and we need to find solutions, so we need to have some time to do that. So don't just think that we're sitting here and that we don't care, because we do care. You know, we wouldn't be here, it's 10 million other things that any of us could be doing, um, if we didn't care. So I appreciate all of the comments. I believe that our city manager that we have and this council together will come together and we'll start to see some changes. So I appreciate everything that you said and I do look for, uh, to hear from you, um, at a future time.
Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I think it's important though, that we don't do just talk, we actually show actions. That's what the citizens want to see. Um, and also, I think this council is, is very unique. You have, um, like somebody said earlier, use your soldiers. You have two people on this council that's really from these areas. That's really, have an understanding of what's going on. Don't let that knowledge leave or not be a part of the solution that we have, that we're trying to, um, change in this city.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Watered, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback off that as well. Um, you know, um, you know, just, just being raised in these communities, uh, you, you know, one thing I don't want to ever pretend to be is, is, is to act like I, I grew up in poverty. I grew up around poverty. So when I say that, I say, you know, I had my mother and father. And I, I still grew up out Prentice in Brighton. So I saw, you know, I, I was always in the community. I saw, you know, people struggling every single day. I, I, I seen it, so I have a great understanding of actually what goes on in Portsmouth, okay? Um, just like some of the people that was talking today. Um, just like some of the people that was talking today, I had teachers that, that kind of propelled me to go to the next level, and I'll say, you know, college, and, and, you know, I saw my father work, um, twenty hours a day. You know, I seen him get off one job, and he'll go to the next job, you know, I, I, you know, I seen these things. And, and I hear a lot of stories at night, and I, and, and I hear a lot of, you know, people, children dying, and, you know, I, quiet as kept, I, I sit right here because I, I heard these stories before, okay? I know some of the victims, okay? I, I, some of these children was in my classroom as I was a substitute teacher, okay? And, you know, it, sometimes when you come up here, I'm, I'm literally shaking, because I just don't even want to let you know how close I am, or how much I, 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 how much information I know about your, your actual story, okay? And, and what I'm telling you guys is, like Councilwoman Lucas, Lu, Lucas Burke said, you know, I'm, I'm not here because, or, 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 some of my colleagues are not here because, uh, you know, we, we just want to be in this position. You know, I, I actually stepped away from, you know, making lucrative money to really address the problems that's going in, going on in Portsmouth. I just didn't want to keep, you know, talking about it, I wanted to take a stand and really try to make a change, you know? And if you think that you can sit up here and have all the, the knowledge, you already starting off wrong. You know, I, I literally sit here and I take notes, and then I work throughout the day, I mean, work throughout the week soon as I leave here. I do boots on the ground. You call me, I come, I come, and, and I, and I try to figure out what's the problem. Um, some people in the audience know me, or Mr. Crado, I, I think, you know, he's been knowing me for a long time. I, I always been a leader, and, and I learned from people like himself. So you, you gotta understand that it takes a, a child to raise a village, and what you gotta understand is that that child is here. And like Ms. Day said, you got two soldiers here. And, and it's not that, it's not that, it's in confrontation going on in this council. It really is that we are tired of seeing a lot of things that we seen in our community. And we, we don't want to just wait for someone else to do things, we want to be the face, and we want to be the solution that really can make change. But also, we need your help, because we need you guys to be tired as well. And we need you guys to support us as much as we want to support you. You know, we are young. We are young, we in an arena that sometimes we don't have no help in. Let me say that once again, we in an arena that we don't have no help, okay? So some of the things you care about, we care about dearly. But we need your help. This is a different arena. So when we sit up here and you see this hell go away, I'm stressed out, okay? I'm be like the man a little bit, but I'm, I'm stressed out, because I'm running around all day. This job don't pay a lot, okay? And I dedicated a lot of my time to try to make sure that this community issues are being addressed. And the, and a lot of these issues didn't happen this year. These issues, we, we built these issues up, and now they, like you say, the chickens came home to roost. It, it's the truth, we seen it happening in our neighborhoods. Not, not, not down the street, across the street, right? Not down the street, across the street. I seen it happening. And as much as I, I think that I can do to, 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 to change things, at, at, at the, uh, you know, at the private sector, no, I, I had to figure out exactly what could I do to step up and make a change. And that's why I'm sitting here before you, that's why I tell you that you can give me a call. I'm sitting here listening, and I want to make sure that you guys know that if I can't help you, hopefully you can come to these meetings and find out who can help you. Because, once again, one council person can't do it by themselves, two can't do it by themselves. And you gotta understand that the problems, that, the problems that you guys need to address, everyone's not gonna, they're not gonna understand. So I plead with you guys, to make sure you keep coming down here, letting us know what's going on. Invite us out, hold us accountable if we don't come out. Do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One last comment, um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll adjourn the meeting. On behalf of all of the members of our City Council, our City Manager, and our City Staff, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight to display your heartfelt sentiments and share your stories. We all need this in the best possible way. I think about so many things, and I know you all do too, but here's one thing I do know. This is our community, and to the degree it will be the community that we desire, it will require all of us. And the brother that stood up here and told his story about the police taking him to his first movie, I had some of those memories too. Many of these things that you all have spoke about, I'm sure that one or most of us can identify with. But I want you to leave here tonight, if you know nothing else, that we are gonna work together, and that we are one team. And it's not about me, it's not about them, it's not about us, it's about we. Okay? So, thank you, thank you all for sharing and showing up, and we appreciate you. If there are no more, if there's no more business for the order with my members, then this meeting is adjourned.